Good evening. I'd like to call the town council meeting agenda for Thursday, February 27th to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements. Okay, the upcoming town council meeting meetings, Thursday, March 13th at 7:00 PM, the regular meeting, and also a regular meeting on Thursday, March 27th at 7:00 PM. Other important dates to remember, Wednesday, March 12th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the All Purpose Room at James Mastercola Upper Elementary School is the deliberative session. It's located at 26 Babusick Lake Road. On Tuesday, April 8th, at 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM is the annual meeting, voting day, at your designated polling location.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, with the warm weather that's settled in this week, the ice skating rink at Watson Park is now closed for the winter season, unless we get a really brutal cold snap. The planning board is seeking volunteers. The planning board currently has three vacant positions. Serving on the planning board is a great way to give back to your community with low to moderate time commitment. No experience is necessary. Training is available. Interested residents should contact Becky Thompson in the town manager's office at (603) 424-2331, or Community Development Department at (603) 424-3531 for more information about the responsibilities involved with the planning board position. And finally, Eversource will be conducting a flight patrol tomorrow in several communities, including Merrimack. Flight times will be between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, weather permitting. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that Chair Finley Rothaus is excused from the meeting this evening, and Counselor McKenzie-Murphy is on her way. So, okay, comments from the press are public, and speaking the devil, McKenzie is walking in as we speak at 7:02.
Perfect timing.
I just made a comment here on her. No recognition, resignations, or retirements, no appointments, no public hearing, any legislative updates from state reps? None?
I didn't get any either.
Town managers' report.
I'll forego my report tonight.
No consent agenda? Okay, all business. Merrimack Village District, Industrial Drive and Continental Boulevard, salt use, wellhead protection area. The town council to consider the support of the Merrimack Village District's request of a proposed change in winter maintenance that the New Hampshire Department of Transportation issue a low-salt or limited-salt route within the wellhead protection area in the Industrial Drive Continental area. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On January 24th, I received a letter from the state of New Hampshire basically telling me that there are several items that, or conditions that need to be met before the New Hampshire DOT will look into low-salt in the area of Continental Boulevard and Industrial Drive where wells 3, 2, and 9 are located. As mentioned before, on minutes, the town council fairably, on March 28th, 2004, almost a year ago, unanimously voted to write a letter of support to have limited or low-salt in that area due to the contaminations of wells 3, which had to be shut down, and then the new wells 9 and 2. Ron Minor, the MVD superintendent, and myself had a call with the DOT, and one of the issues was the letter came from MVD and not the town. It wasn't on Town Letterhead, so I have to put it on Town Letterhead. We have to be clear in asking for change, which the letter does say. They wanted to remind me that this is a significant change in maintenance in the area, and that once they get the letter asking for the change, they will schedule a meeting with the town council to explain what the change really means to the roads in that area. We're okay with all of that. The reason why I'm bringing this back in front of the council is we have two new members, Peter Albert and Jen Jobin, that weren't on the council before. So instead of just sticking it in the sign file to say, "Sign this, please," I want to explain a little bit. And really what this was, was a request from MVD to this board, council, to ask for the reduced salt in the area because we, they have done studies for well 3, and they believe that most of the salt contamination in the area is coming from Continental Boulevard because of the amount of salt that the state uses. They tried to pin it off on fidelity. Fidelity is in a low-salt environment. They met with the commission. There's a commission in that area. They met with the commission, and they agreed to use limited salt. The Alamoal has a no-salt in their site plan. There are buildings up and down Continental Boulevard that we've been reaching out to through MVD, reaches out through us, and then we, Community Development, sends out letters to those businesses, reminding them that they're in a low-salt or no-salt based on their site plan approvals in that area. So the only one that possibly could be contaminating well 3 was the salt being used. A little tidbit, I received a call from another town manager north of us, several towns north of us, and is having the same problem with the New Hampshire DOT, with the amount of salt that they're using, they're polluting their water supply with it. So I'm here tonight to ask for the council to sign or
I was just gonna ask, how do you want to put the motion?
Motion. Motion to, basically similar to the motion that we did last time, if you give me one second.
Except to use the letterhead?
Yep. It was moved to accept Merrimack Village District request of a proposed change in the winter maintenance that the state of New Hampshire Department of Transportation should issue a low-salt or limited-salt route from exit 10 on ramp from DW Highway southbound onto Industrial Drive, continuing south on Continental Boulevard to the end where Continental Boulevard meets Milford Road. The underside town officials support the change in winter maintenance as the route is within the wellhead protection area and provides drinking water to businesses and residents of Merrimack, New Hampshire.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Nancy Murphy, second by Jess Jobin.
Can I speak to my motion?
Absolutely.
Paul's motion. This is so important. I think it's really important for people in the community to understand why we sort of get really upset about these sodium chloride levels. Not only was there a cost to people who are MVD customers to, you know, we're replacing wells, that we didn't harm, that the salt use is responsible, but the bigger issue is public health. Cardiac issues, elevated blood pressure, and those kinds of things are associated with what's happening on our water supply, and it's so important that we do everything we can to support MVD and this, and hold the Department of Transportation accountable for how they treat our roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Paul, maybe MVD can answer for us. Is there anything due to monitor that, I mean, these people, like Slate, I'm thinking the condos, the Slate condominiums that are right there, they're fairly new. Does anybody monitor, they could be saying, "Oh, don't worry, we will put it on," and then they're loading up the parking lots with salt.
We have been, actually, we have written three or four letters to businesses in Continental Boulevard to remind them that they're using salt. It's very easy to see if they're using salt in the parking lot. There's always that white residue that's around, and because they're right across the street from MVD, MVD is actually going around and checking those lots.
Mr. Minor from MVD.
We do, we do drive around verifying, especially the ones that have a restriction on their site plan, monitoring those sites. We do check other sites as well, just to kind of see, you know, who is using salt, so we can actually address that down the road and send them letters as well and ask them not to, or reduce their salt, so.
I suspect that you did, but I just wanted to confirm. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you. Yes, Nancy?
I just have a question. In terms of accountability for that, I mean, it's really important. It's one thing for us to write that letter, make that request, but should people violate whatever is in the site plan, a letter makes sense certainly first, but are, do we have in place something a little bit more consequential to say, "Hey, this is important. It's not just a preference. It's a matter of, we can't have our drinking water contaminated."
Yes, they get a cease and desist letter. If they do not cease and desist within 30 days, then we keep moving it up the ladder chain, ladder, and we could take them to court and actually have fines levied against them for not doing it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone against? None? Okay, 600. And here's the letter, if you can be signing it. Okay, new business. Acceptance of donation to Parks and Recreation Department Scholarship Fund. The town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $1,000 from the Doolong family to be used towards the Parks and Recreation Department's camp scholarship fund pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15.
Pretty self-explanatory. This will allow several kids to be able to go to camp this summer.
Thank you to the Doolong family. And Paul, are we gonna send them a thank you letter?
We send every donation a thank you letter.
And are you making a motion, Mr. Albert?
So moved. My favorite motion.
Second? Nancy, okay, motion made by Peter to accept and expend, and seconded by Nancy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? None, 600. Administration of Federal Grant Funds Policy Discussion. And Paul, you're gonna be doing this? The town council to be presented with the details and discuss the town Merrimack's administration of federal grant fund policy.
Yep, and Finance Director Collaborator will be speaking of this. This came out of, from our most recent audit, so.
So it's a recommendation from the audit?
Correct.
Okay. We do have the paperwork.
Yes, perfect. So yes, as Paul mentioned, this was an audit finding from our recently completed audit on June 30th, 2024. It's my understanding, this is something that isn't, wasn't well-known in the municipal community that we needed to have such a policy. So we researched it, and our Deputy Finance Director, Sanya Simpson, found one. We updated it to meet what we needed. I presented it to the town manager, and now it's sitting before you. But it basically establishes minimum standards regarding internal controls and grant management to be used by the town to ensure that all federal funds are lawfully expended. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. We had to bring this forward to the town council, and then once it's approved, I'll let our audit firm know that we are now in compliance with their audit finding.
The funny part about the whole thing is that federal requirements now, even though we do our own background checks, we have to go out to a federal government site and verify that our employees are in good standing with the federal government. Because if they're not in good standing with the federal government with this federal money, they cannot be part of that grant process. And the same thing with all our contractors. And that wasn't part of it. We always used our background checks, which are, you know, pretty intense to say they meet all qualifications. And now we even have to do this for our vendors too, to make sure they're in good standings with the federal government. So that's one thing that came out of the audit, that you'll see that as an audit finding as well.
I just had, saw one typo. I did learn a new word, too, a locable. I didn't, I haven't expanded my vocabulary.
What page is it?
So page 2, under cash management, the end of that first line, form should be "from."
Oh, okay. I'll get that changed.
Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'll need one to accept the policy as written with the change.
So moved. Motion made by Nancy Murphy.
I'll make second.
Seconded by McKenzie Murphy. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None, 600.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Town of Merrimack Goal Setting Summary Review Discussion. The town council to review and discuss the goals of the 24, 25 fiscal year. And this is where we start deciding, are we doing what we say we wanted to do, or Paul keeping us on target?
It's very interesting. We kind of had a late start with some of these goals. You know, it was our first year really changing our retreat format to come up with four or five goals to move forward. They, one of the first goals was to create a town smartphone app to improve communication with residents. When looking at this, the town formed, the town council formed a small committee of myself, Counselor Jobin, Counselor Rothaus, and Vice Chairman Harrington, and Chair Rothaus, I should have said, to look at this. And really, Counselor Jobin did most of the heavy lifting for us, going out, looking at other sites. One of the things we did produce was that highlight sheet that we are QR coding every quarter to get the word out to unimportant topics. The other thing is Counselor Jobin's keeping us pretty much in line when there's a town event, to have a town table to push the word out that way, Joe, that it's not just the town councillor attending the event. There are actually people can come up and interact with town councillors. We do have a lot of newer residents to this town due to the apartments in the area. So it's nice to get out there and see who your councillors are. And then the third thing, when we came up, is that this app itself, and we're waiting for our website to be updated to Drupal 10. We received some information this week that there's a, actually a webinar beginning of next week on Drupal 10 and the migration to Drupal 10 on our website. So we're hoping that with that, we'll start migrating, and if we can get that, then one of the things we'll be looking at is doing a smartphone app and seeing how that interacts. So that's goal number one, to create a smartphone app involved. So we're, we're pretty far down the road on that one, and hopefully that will be completed before the next retreat, which is May or June of this year. The next one was increased collaboration between Merrimack governing bodies to assess the needs, to align strategic priorities. And a lot of this is, we're ongoing. You know, we have objectives, we have four or five objectives underneath this, and a lot of them are ongoing or not started due to various reasons. You know, we are looking at better coordination between town committees, MVD, school districts, and the town of Merrimack. That's always the tricky part. We've been very busy with budgets in the school board and MVD, and, you know, so that's something that, once the deliberative sessions are over and ballot in April is done, we can get together with some of those and start working down to better collaboration and coordination between all parties. Basically, I started that a little bit with the school board and the business manager, or the Assistant Superintendent for Business, trying to coordinate, you know, what are they putting on their ballot? What are we looking at putting on our warrant to go in front of voters? So kind of started that a little bit, talking to MVD. We did talk about certain things also, but nothing that's written in stone that, you know, I can hang my hat on and say, "Yep, we did this. It's all done." Another objective is, we got to look at gathering buy-in from various governing bodies. We're looking at how to initiate the buy-in and get the buy-in and working on towards that. And a lot of this whole section is, is how do we keep on moving? The one thing that I have started was a meeting with several businesses in the community to discuss their needs and how the town of Merrimack can help them. The two biggest issues that every business has told me already is daycare and housing. We knew about the housing, really didn't know about daycare, but daycare is becoming a big issue for shortages in daycare. And, you know, it's almost to the point where some of these businesses are even thinking about having in-house daycare, just so their employees can come to work. So those were the two big issues there on that goal. The next goal is infrastructure, identifying possible property options for developing the safety complex. That's ongoing. There are several properties that have been identified, working through the process with those landowners to see if they're willing to sell to the town of Merrimack. The second objective was develop strategies to modify, identify possible options for town government offices and fields. Once again, when we're looking at purchasing land for the safety complex, we're also looking to see if there's additional land that can be in the same area. So that's ongoing, and if we can lock down one of these properties, I think we'd have a good shot of putting in the safety complex and being able to expand our athletic field juice. And then funding opportunities, we got to see what these, what we can come up with an agreement before we really can get into funding opportunities. We have some certain things coming in the next 24 hours that might, we have to pivot on our funding opportunities and how we're going to fund things. And so we're still working on that. So that was goal number three. Then goal number four is controlled budget spending. We basically did, I think, did a good job of bringing a budget, or will be bringing a budget forward to deliberative session, that was a need-based budget and wasn't a lot of, there's no real wants in there. It's mostly what we need to operate the town of Merrimack. And then one of the other objectives is to try to attract and retain quality staff. That's ongoing. We are continuing with that. I am happy to announce that I am, I just offered the three vacancies and fire. We just offered conditional offers to three of the individuals, and they have accepted. So they're moving through the process. Real, there's only, there's only six or so vacancies that are outstanding, and I have five police vacancies for five police officers. And down at Wastewater, I have the chief operator position, which we've trying to reinvent how we're going to advertise that and pay grade and other things with that position to try to bring in a qualified individual for that position down at Wastewater. But those are really, knock on wood, we've been able to hire quality employees over the last couple of months to really get our staffing levels up in departments that needed it. Finance individuals start on Monday. We have another individual starting next week. So we are starting to get some of our key positions filled, and people are coming in. So, and, you know, looking at, we had some significant losses, such as Pat Murphy leaving as administrator, but I think we hit a home run with Sandra Delarose. She's, knock on wood, that she knows what she's doing, and she was able to step in there, and there wasn't a long lead time of training, which is always nice. So we did well there. So we are, that objective, we are moving towards it, but it is still always going to be ongoing to attract and retain those quality employees. And then revenue, I think we completed that in the budget. It's ongoing, but we completed it for this budget cycle to increase our revenues, which we had, we did by 2%. And then, you know, we're trying our hardest to balance taxes and what is the need of the community and our budget. So, and you'll see that when we go to the ballot.
The Great Balancing Act. Nancy?
Yeah, thank you. I just, a couple of typos on that page that we're on right now.
Okay.
In the bottom paragraph, the third, bottom paragraph, line 3, he, well, continues, it's capitalized, it doesn't need to be, but he continues to look at, should be ways to attract, not was. And on the next line, line 4, the current height performing, not preforming, staff. That's it.
Paul, I'm curious. I know that there was one retirement just recently at the PD, but they've had four open spaces, slots. I know the chief's not here, but what is MPD doing? Are they, is there something for recruitment or?
We are recruiting. We are getting applicants. We have moved a couple applicants forward, and they've washed out in the process.
Okay.
So we're not lowering our standards just to hire to hire. We're keeping the high standard that our police department has. A lot of it is that they apply, and then we call them in for an interview, and, "Yeah, I'll be there on Tuesday," and they don't show up. So they wash out that way, or they get an interview, they get moved on to the next segment of the process, and they get washed out. This is not just a Merrimack issue with the police department. This is a state police issue. I know at one point they were down 60 officers. They're over 63. Londonderry, Manchester, Nashua, you know, every community you can go around and say, "Are you short police officers?" And it's, they are all short police officers. So this is nothing new for Merrimack, and just trying to get people out there and through the process. And that's one of the deals, is getting them through the process. We might be bringing, we're ironing out some details of potentially bringing back special patrolmen. Got to iron out some details. And it's not so much to get them, young people interested in the police department, but some of the gentlemen who retired from the police department that, to continue to do certain things for the department. So we're looking at some of these options, other options. Other communities have that. Derry has that. Bedford, Goffstown, they all have something very similar. So we're trying to see if that will work in Merrimack and try to use some of our people that we invested all those years and all that talent and all that memory of the town to see if they would stay on into that capacity where maybe they're not taking an eight-hour shift for 40 hours a week, but they might be willing to fill in here and there when needed. So, but we're looking at that to see how that's going to flow right now. But those are the issues that we see in the police department. We got to reinvent how we get guys on the street. And for those listening at home, Merrimack is still very safe. We are still filling those positions. We are still filling those shifts with overtime. Those guys, the police officers, both male and female, are out there protecting and serving the community.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions regarding the summary? Thank you for your update. Okay, 2005 deliberative session. We all receive this guide from Paul. Town council to discuss the details and motions of the upcoming 2025 deliberative session being held on Wednesday, March 12th, 2025. We all, I think everybody, well, maybe Jennifer, you know, this will be your first deliberative, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
But everyone else?
I've attended plenty, but yes, on the size.
This is where we have to go through the different articles and make a decision about who's going to make the motion and who's going to second and who's going to speak to it.
Right. Article 3, which is the budget, is usually done by the chair and vice chair.
That's right. So the motion will be made by Finley.
Yep.
And I will second, and he will address.
And he will address.
And I usually do the second, which is the capital reserve funds.
Article 4.
So I would like to make the motion. I don't know who wants to second. I don't know who wants to second.
I'll second.
Okay, Andy will second, and I will address the article.
All right. Article two is the $100,000 grant. Mackenzie? Do we have a second?
Sure.
Nancy?
Yeah.
Okay. And article five is the Wastewater Capital Reserve. That you just have to say ditto after Nancy explains everything.
Can I do that?
So Nancy Murphy to make the motion on article five, right? And second?
I can second.
Jennifer?
And then we do not have to do article six, because I talked to Chris Christensen. I said, "Chris, you should make that motion because you know what this is about." So Chris is going to be moving it, and I'm sure somebody from the audience will second. But if not, is there a councillor that's willing to second the article six?
I'd be, oh, Peter, okay.
Okay.
And you have, you have all these, right?
Yeah, I wrote them all down.
So we'll make sure that Brian gets a list?
Yes, I'm going to get Brian, Brian in the town clerk list.
Perfect. Any questions about any of this? Okay. And would you do me a favor? Would you summarize that and email it out to everybody?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Okay. Shall we move on to minutes? First is the minutes of January 29th, which was a budget meeting. Are there any corrections?
I just had one, small one. Page six, line 16, was actually in my comments. It says increased overtime. I'd like that just to be separated into two words. It meant overtime, like a time period, not overtime.
Got that, Paul?
Yep.
That's all I got.
Any other corrections? I have a motion.
I will motion to accept the minutes from the town council budget meeting of January 29th.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer Jobin, second by Andy Hunter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Six, zero, zero. The minutes from February 13th, 2025. Any corrections? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the February 13th meeting.
Motion made by Mackenzie Murphy, second by?
Second.
Jennifer Jobin? Whoops.
Mackenzie was abused technically. She can vote, but she can't make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 13th, 2025, as presented.
Thank you for getting that.
Thank you.
Motion made by Andy, second by Jennifer. No changes, right? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, so it's five, zero, one, Mackenzie abstaining. Okay, comments from the press are public. The onslaught. Comments from the council?
I just, I know Finley's not here to defend himself, but I just want to say that this is the fastest meeting, you know, vice chairwoman that I've seen, you know? I hope he's maybe watching from California, but I couldn't help but just add that in.
Well, I think 90% of it is the nice, small agenda, too. Okay, any, no, no, no comments from the council? Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Andy Hunter, motion, second by Peter Albert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, and six, zero, zero. Good evening, Merrimack.